Good evening and welcome to the Town of Emmitsburg's Town Meeting for Tuesday, October 22nd, 2024. Before we begin, I kindly ask that you silence your cell phones, rings, notifications, media, and gaming. Thank you very much ahead of time, and I invite you to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is certified by the United States of America and two republics for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
Just a quick announcement that Commissioner Hoover is unable to be here tonight. Future meetings include the Planning Commission coming up on October 28th at 7:00 PM in the Town Office and on Zoom, and Board of Commissioners meeting on November 4th at 7:00 PM here in the Town Office and on Zoom. With that, we go right into Commissioners' comments. So, starting with Commissioner Hagan.
Okay, just wanted to remind everybody that on Thursday, October 31st, we have our trick-or-treating from 5:00 to 6:45. And then our parade will line up between 6:50 and 7:15, and at the firehouse for some games and treats and costume judging.
Thank you. Commissioner Turquist?
Nothing, thank you.
Commissioner Sweeney?
I have nothing.
Okay, and the only announcement I have is one that's already been made at a previous meeting is in honor of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Don't forget, we have all the raffles going on and businesses participating to, if you donate, you can enter the raffle to win various prizes. And that's all I have. So, since Commissioner Hoover is not here, we will turn to Mayor Dadas for comments.
Okay, thanks. I'll be real quick. I'd just like to congratulate Emmitsburg High School Alumni Association. I attended their 100th anniversary celebration Saturday night, and that was, that was quite a very, very nice event. The oldest class member that was there, it was 97 years old. She graduated in 1944. And I had, I got, had the opportunity to sit with her and chat with her, and it was very, very interesting. And the only other thing I have is November 13th, Commissioners, we're going to be having a gathering of all the nonprofit organizations, churches, youth groups, to, just to do a meet and greet and get input on a couple of projects that I want to try to kick off. One is a community calendar, and the other is a weekly soup kitchen with hot meals to see if we have any interest in that. We're getting a lot of requests from the community on things like that, so you're more than welcome to be here on the 13th for that. I think it's at 6:30, and we've sent letters out to all the organizations. That's all I got.
Is that here in the Town Office?
Yes, here.
Thank you. Perfect. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And from there, we are moving on to public comments. We only have one, Pastor John. Did you want to wait for your comment as it pertains to your agenda item, or do you want to? Yes, okay. All right, thank you. I won't forget. I'll put it right here. All right. Moving on to our administrative business, we have none. We have nothing on our consent agenda. So, we go on to our agenda item number one, which is for consideration, approve or deny change order number four, building delay for the Creamery Road Pump Station project.
Thank you. I'm going to defer to, we have Jeff Groh, who is our engineer from RK&amp;K, and Leslie Powell, the town attorney. We're looking at two separate change orders tonight. Change order number four for the building delay, it's a contract extension. And I will defer to either Jeff or Leslie. I will also mention that we do have the contractor represented from Conawago, Brian Meyer, who's also in attendance.
Thank you.
Okay, hi, this is Jeff Groh. I am with RK&amp;K, the engineer for this project. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, there was, the contractor submitted a delay with regards to installation of the precast building, and that was, they're asking for an additional 50 days no-cost time extension. So, our recommendation, based upon the review of the delay, was to, for the board to award it, but to, to any motion to be without prejudice to the contract rights that the town may have, and not waive and reserve your right to any liquidated and special damages in accordance with the contract. It's my opinion that had this been the only change order, that you would be entitled to liquidated damages. But there is another change order associated with the PCO-5 that our opinion is that's not the fault of the contractor. That was due to the delays at the factory that the town nor the contractor could have anticipated. At the time we bid the project, it was, it was on schedule. This was for, well, I don't want to confuse topics. I guess I should stick with PCO number four, so sorry about that.
That's okay. Okay, so you did have a recommendation to go along with the approval then.
Yes. I don't know, Leslie, if you would like to weigh in on any?
Sure. No, the, the change order number four, as Jeff said, were the only change order on the horizon would entitle you to liquidated damages. There is some discussion that we're, I guess a debate perhaps would be more appropriate with Conawago regarding change order number five. And we've had several discussions about it, and we believe that at this time, approval of change order number five is premature. But the change order number four, as Jeff, you know, indicated, should be approved, subject to a reservation of rights.
So, if you look at page 11, I attached the email from Jeff regarding RK&amp;K's position on change order number four. And it's the same recommendation that staff and the town attorney would make, is recommend that any motion for approval, as Jeff said, be without prejudice to any contract rights that the town may have, and the town, and that the town not waive and expressly, expressly reserve the right to seek any liquidated and special damages in court, in accordance with the contract. So, if that's the route the board chooses to go, that needs to be part of your motion.
Perfect. All right, thank you. Is there anything else as part, part of that presentation before we move to?
I would suggest that you treat change order number four and change order number five separately.
Yes.
Yeah. And so, with, with respect to change order number four, we're done.
Correct. Okay, perfect. Is there a motion? What I hope to do, get a motion in a second, and we'll move it to discussion, is there a motion to approve? Well, do I hear a motion to approve change order number four, building delay for the Creamery Road Pump Station project? And that the approval be without prejudice to any contract rights the town may have, and that the town may not waive and expressly reserve the right to seek any liquidated and special damages in accordance with the contract.
I assume.
Thank you, Commissioner Sweeney. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Hagan. Okay, now we can bring it to discussion. Questions, comments, thoughts?
I think it was stated that it's a no-cost extension, correct? Okay, that, yeah, I'm good.
Okay. Any other questions, discussion? No. Okay. Since there is a motion on the floor, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion carries for approved. One is no one against, and there is one absent. So, now we can move on to agenda item number two, which is change order number five.
Again, I'll defer to Jeff and Leslie. Change order number five is a contract extension due to an MCC delay, which is, is a critical path item. And again, I'll defer to Jeff.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. He has a summary when the project was bid, and when we looked into the Motor Control Center, that's the MCC. It's a critical component for operating the pumps. We got durations for construction. It was well within the duration for construction. We had extended the contract duration at the time due to the generator, if you recall, from 365 to 450 days. Since, well, at the time it was bid, the contractor found out at the time that it was on schedule. The MCC was on schedule per their submitted shop drawings and their schedules. Since that time, they had communications with the factory, the supplier, that the MCC, the Motor Control Center, is now delayed. We had asked at multiple meetings on schedules for updates, and then we, we did finally get a letter in July of 2024 about the delay. And so, because that, in our opinion, is not in, in the control of the contractor, nor is it in the control of the town, that the contractor would only be entitled to a time extension. So, that, that extends the contract for everybody, for the town, for, for the contractor, but they would not be entitled. They, they submitted a letter with their time extension, saying they reserve the rights for temporary bypass costs and any other charges that they may have during that duration. We disagree with that. We believe that the contract is clear, that they're sole and exclusive remedy per contract EJCDC C700. There's a paragraph 4.05c that you can all look at if, if you have the contract, but it says that's their sole and exclusive remedy. So, our position is, is that they would only get a time extension, no costs, and that is what the, what the PCO, the change order is for time extension. It's not for costs. They did reserve the right to come back later for costs, but again, our opinion is, is that's not warranted. So, so Leslie, I'll turn it over to you at this point.
Sure. So, as Jeff indicated, there is a specific contract provision under which the contractor is responsible for its subcontractors. The supplier is in fact a subcontractor of the contractor, and the sole remedy for delays is a contract extension. There's a couple of things that happened in connection with this whole shebang. Originally, the only change order we got from Conawago was for the MCC, and it sought a considerable, considerably more time. And if there were, if there were to be an award of costs, the town would have been pegged for not only the, the extension for, it would have been pegged for the entire extension, as opposed to subtracting out the 50 days, which we are absolutely entitled to do. And, and so, we didn't learn about the December delay until, I believe it was July. Is that right, Jeff?
Yes, yeah, it was. It actually might have been August. We asked, we requested in July. I believe it was August when we found out. But it's July, August timeframe. Either way, it's a good eight months after Conawago found out.
Yeah, August 8th is when we were notified.
Right. And, and so, one of the consequences of that is, is that if you had wanted to shop it, for example, and see if anybody else could supply it, you were deprived of that opportunity at that time. But of course, you know, they kept, they said, well, yes, it's going to be there within the time contract period, but we didn't have an opportunity to explore anything in order to determine if somebody else could in fact supply it by the date we needed it. And so, so that's one point I want to make. The second one is that, is as Jeff said, the contract doesn't provide for an extension. We have requested that Conawago advise us of the contract provision on which they rely to support a claim for additional fees, and we have not, at this point, gotten a response. But based on our reading, it's not there.
Okay. Okay. So, if you look at page 18, the recommendation of the engineer, as well as the town and Ms. Powell, is that since the MCC has not arrived yet, and assuming the delay associated with the building is approved, the recommendation is the town holds off on final consideration of the time delay for PCO number five until the MCC has arrived on site at the facility, because we don't know if there's going to be any additional delays.
Sure. Okay.
Yes, it is.
Absolutely.
Right. So, the, the motion would be then to deny change order number five at this time.
Okay. And do we need to put the stipulation of?
Not with a denial.
Not with a denial.
No, because what will happen is, you know, heaven, heaven hopes that this thing will arrive within the timeframe that we now expect it to. And at that time, we will know how much time it will take to further extend the contract.
Okay.
Okay. So, it's essentially, it's premature, and as Kathy said, you know, let's get it in our hands.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. Okay. Again, I'll look for a motion in a second and go to discussion. Do, is there a motion to deny change order number five, critical equipment delay for the Creamery Road Pump Station project?
So, move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Bringing it to discussion. Questions, comments, thoughts? I'm sorry? No, I'm sorry. Public comment sheet would have been good for that. So, at this time, I'm inclined to go with the recommendation of our lawyer and move forward with the denial. That's, that's my opinion. Everything that they said makes a lot of sense. We want to wait until it arrives. Okay, so we do have a motion on the floor. Is any further discussion? Nope. Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries for to one, for approval with one absent. That brings us to agenda item number three. For discussion, payment plan for, payment plan option for water and sewer connection fees for Christ Community Church. At this point, Pastor John, since you withheld your comment, we'll, we'll bring you up for public comment at this time.
Well, I want to, I want to thank you all for putting me on the agenda. I appreciate that. I appreciate your time, and.
I'm going to have you do the formal name, and if you live in, yeah, all that.
I am Pastor John Talcott of Christ Community Church.
Thank you.
And 303, 303 West Lincoln Avenue, and I just want to share with you a little bit about our, our church building project, and considering my, my petition for the Commissioners regarding the water sewer tap fees. I believe all of you are well aware of the, that the town planner had, had determined and confirmed that the water sewer tap fees would be $164,160, and that these fees were to be paid before I can get a building permit for the new church building on Creamery Road. Now, just to give you a little background, over, over the past three years, since undertaking this building project, the church has paid Frederick County $5,892 for fees and permits. The church has paid the town of Emmitsburg $9,728 in fees, as well as paying for the town's consulting firm RK&amp;K, $10,315 in fees to review our plans, which we have already paid our architects and engineers, the professionals, who we were paying to do this, $160,246. And it's those same plans now that are, for lack of a better word, have been held hostage at Frederick County for, for months as they're reviewing them again. Now, in addition to all that, the church is required to pay the town $164,160 in water sewer tap fees, which I personally feel is excessive for a church that's only open for ministry eight to 10 hours a week. And so, on June 20th of this year, I petitioned the town staff with a, a formal request for a reduction in the water sewer tap fees. I was told by the town planner that they couldn't process my request because the, our Maryland Certified Plumbing Engineer, Mike Thompson, was not qualified to certify the number of taps that were required. Several weeks later, after Najila had consulted with RK&amp;K, they worked out something, and our plumbing engineer was approved. About a week later, I received an email from the town saying that I needed to bring my request to the attention of the Commissioners. And so, now it's a month later, and on July 22nd, I sent each one of you a request for a reduction in the water sewer tap fees. On September 9th, the subject was brought up at the town meeting, and the Commissioners kindly agreed that there would be a workshop for that, and they would discuss that subject in detail, realizing now that it was going to be a long, drawn-out process, that there would be changes to the town code. On September 23rd, I asked the board about a payment plan, so that we can continue moving forward with our plans, so that we can get to the point where, hopefully, I can go to a financial institution and, and get a loan. What, what I'm requesting tonight for the board is, if you would consider a payment plan for Christ Community Church, so that we can begin paying the water sewer tap fees with an allowance that the total amount charged would be amended based upon your determination regarding the aforementioned $164,160 in tap fees. I want to thank you all for considering my request, and thank you in advance for the, the, the time, which I'm sure you have realized to be involved in considering restructuring the, the fee structure for all, all the businesses, the, the nonprofits and churches in Emmitsburg. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. From there, Ms. Willis, where would you like to? Oh, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify one thing about the, the plumber. There were emails back and forth between Najilia and Pastor John on June 20th, and he was told that your, your fixture count and your request, it does have to be stamped by a certified plumber, and it was not. And it was sent back to him the very same day, and he said that he would get on it right away. So, on that end, there were no delays on us regarding the plumber. Once we got the documents, we moved forward. And he was advised that, based off the town code, town staff does not have the authority to grant anything other than what the tap fees are. And then that's how we got to where we were at the last meeting.
Correct.
Yes.
Correct. There's nothing in the code that would allow for that.
Correct.
Which is why we ended up here. So, it sounds like the request now is a payment plan. The only, we had something in place before. So, I don't know if that's something that we look to Resolution 20-04R as a starting point, or just starting with a discussion of what the council, if anything, what direction you would like to move in. Because there's two different requests here. One is the payment plan for the 164 and change, and then to modify, to have the payment plan change if the rates are adjusted in the future, is what I heard. Yes.
Excuse me just one second.
Sure.
So, there, there are just a couple of things to keep in mind. The, the current ordinance does allow for a payment plan. But the resolution that was adopted pursuant to that ordinance only applies to commercial businesses, as you know, that create an employment base. And so, you would have to enact a new resolution.
Correct.
With respect to the treatment of applicants, you need to treat similarly situated applicants the same. And so, if the town were inclined to revisit how it calculates connection credits, the town could certainly do so. And there are other models out there that if you would like us to compile and present to you for your review and consideration, we could certainly do that. But at, at this point now, the, the, the reduction in fee is, is kind of out there.
Right.
Right. So, I think that if you want to do the payment plan, you could do that. And then, should you come back and recalculate for basically all commercial, or, you know, non-residential, shall we say, applicants, you could certainly do that. I think that you shouldn't treat one category of nonprofits differently than another category of nonprofits. And in terms of how you look at this, the one thing that you will certainly have to consider is how, and while ordinances are not retroactive, Emmitsburg is a small town, and frankly, how the other businesses are going to feel about the fact that they paid full freight, and now we're doing a recalculation. You know, I mean, that's just a practicality, and I don't know, budgetarily speaking, what that impact is. And I think that's something that you would also want to explore in your considerations.
Yeah. Okay. Um, I agree. As, as far as that goes, is like, I don't think we're in a position to, to say payment plan, and we're going to reduce it as part of our payment plan all at the same time, especially if we don't know if, if and when that's going to happen. But Ms. Powell, if I may ask another question, when you say applicants, you know, need to be compared correctly. So, in this case, obviously, he's not a private sector employee. And you said it could, it would result in a different.
I think you'd need to draft a new resolution.
Resolution.
Yeah, because your ordinance isn't limited. That allows for payment plans.
So.
But it's the resolution that you enacted pursuant to that ordinance, so you'd need a new resolution.
Right. And then, is there, would it be a resolution that could be, apply specifically to churches or no, because it would encompass?
It would, it would depend on, frankly, what you want to do. I, I think that, I know that other nonprofits have raised this issue about the expense associated with this, the way the connection credits are calculated. And so, I think that when you look at it, you might want to be a little broader than just churches, but this is, this is your decision. You know, exemptions are made for religious institutions in other ways. I mean, they're not subject to Title VII. They don't have to comply with the Civil Rights Act. I mean, there's a whole bunch of exit strategies for religious institutions. So, I mean, you could also look at caps on connections, as well as address, you know, the hours of operation. One of the things that's interesting is that while the church may now only be open eight to 10 hours a week, we don't know if other services are going to be held there, if fixtures are going to be used more. So, for example, a lot of AA meetings occur at churches that were, you know, that results in more use, you know, more toilet flushing or whatever you have. And then, if you start having, you know, if you decide to have a. And then if you start having, you know, if you decide to have a preschool, then that's going to change it again. And so while the preschool might be a change in use, I don't think that providing a community service is going to count, but that will increase use. So it's it. There's a lot of things to think about.
Correct. And I mean, with the connection fees being a one time.
It's a one time.
It's a one time cost. So here we have according to, I I think it was Pastor John's architect who came last time to speak. He said, we went for the biggest building we could based on the amount of land that, you know, buildable land. So he wanted to kind of do it once, so to speak. So it's it's built out bigger than like, I guess my point in saying that is if if the building were at some point to be purchased and then it is suddenly being used to its full capacity. We lost that opportunity. It's not like we could.
Well, if there's a change in use and an increase in use, then I believe that under your current regs, you can, you can't. No. Well, other jurisdictions, you can't. So so you might want to look at that. I I would have to go back and look at.
It has.
If a change of use we could, but if it's just increased usage, then. Then you can't, then you cannot.
Right.
Right. So if it were like a mega go get sold to a mega church, then you'd be out of luck.
Or if, you know, we get a lot more parishioners, which is a good thing.
Right.
And usage really does hit the capacity, we'd be looking at something very different than what we're looking at now.
Right. And and to to certain point, you know, the the that's ameliorated by the service charge, the fees, the rates that you charge for the water and sewer service. But as you said, this is for the connection and, you know, it it's also a personal decision of the church. I mean, they're the ones that decided that they want to build a humongous building and I'm using that in relative terms and I mean no disrespect. But if they don't have the capacity for that, I don't know. I mean, a lot of churches will build to what they need with the ability to add on.
I see.
Right?
Yeah.
You know, and so and you can't control their choices. So it it's an interesting dilemma.
Right. Right. I agree.
Yeah.
It is an interesting dilemma. Turning to other commissioners, so I'm not monopolizing the conversation.
If we were to pass another resolution that talked about either nonprofits or religious organizations, this resolution wouldn't go away, right?
That is correct.
A new one would not replace this one.
That is correct.
It would be in addition to.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And in terms of the size of the church, the tap fees are based on our current structure. And I think we all agreed at a recent meeting that those rates were not in line with other municipalities. And we were going to look at the capacity adjustment factor, which would reduce the cost of tap fees for all commercial businesses or non-residential.
I think we agreed to look at it. I don't think we agreed that it need as a consensus that it all of it needed to be adjusted. I think we just made it a consensus to come back and talk further about it.
Agreed to provide a list of property types for the town to then go out and look at a couple of different options. Because what we discovered was our rates are significantly higher than other local municipalities.
So it so I believe what what I recall was our our actual connection fees are not higher. We're about in the middle, but it's the way that they're calculated based off the fixture count. And that what we are seeing is a lot of municipalities are going away from using fixture counts and are going towards using it calculating off of usage, which then would reduce the tap fees. And then you also discussed the the ca- capacity adjustment factor. So your actual fees themselves are not way out of line, but the way that we may be calculating them if the board chooses.
Right.
Might be what is out of line.
Right. It's because they're the tap fee of, I guess, eighty two hundred or eight thousand is multiplied times the number of fixtures, which brings us to 164,000. So it's our fixture unit chart that's kind of out of whack with other municipalities.
Right. Right. Now Frederick County that I have found, at least in this area, Frederick County government is the only one that I have found that is using fixture count to calculate tap fees, but then they are also doing the capacity adjustment factor.
Correct.
So that's how, you know, the the churches at the at Frederick County's level has a very low or has a, I think it's point two, if I remember correctly, capacity adjustment factor. So that's how the tap fees at Frederick County for a church is much is significantly lower than what we have.
Right. So it make it may make a lot more sense to use the usage, right, as the factor for determining what the tap fees are. Because obviously heavier users are going to put more stress and wear and tear on the system and should pay more than.
I I still understand in my head, though, how that makes sense because if if you have a large building and maybe you're only at ten 10% capacity for that first year or two or even 10 years, but then suddenly you're at capacity. The the rate has already been determined then based on that.
Right. So what I've read and and I have to do some more research that there are some municipality or some organization places that allow you then, so you set just for argument's sake, you're going to use 10,000 gallons per quarter. Your tap fee is based off of that usage calculated out. But after two years, I think it's a year or two years, they go back and.
Two years, it gets retested.
There you go.
And then they and then there can be an increase in the connection fee. So so there's, I mean, there's more than one way to do this. And when I look at the immediate need of the church, one of the things that you could consider is instructing staff to prepare a resolution that you could then that could then come back before the board be voted on to create a new nonprofit payment plan option. And then in the meantime, relook at how you calculate connection fees. And 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 do a a complete fix, which would probably benefit everybody. But then, as I said, you still have to think about, well, what about these other people?
Right. And that was where I was gonna go with that. So so let's say, let's say we give direction to prepare a resolution, looking at a payment plan option. And then separately, we're looking into whether or not we do the fixtures or whatever. We did have some, I would imagine, some recent construction go up that that would have benefited from having that. So how do we? How do we justify that?
Well, as a legal matter, the ordinance has a prospective effect. So it only apply to future projects.
Correct.
Right? But, you know, that said, you know, there's a concept of fundamental fairness.
Right.
And and that's really what I'm talking about. You know, you want, because you want to treat your businesses fairly, your commercial or your non-residential, where you want to treat everybody fairly.
Right.
So how you do that, how you address that and what the impact is on the water and sewer budget, keeping in mind that the state pretty much wants these to be self-sufficient operations is is a needle that's going to have to be threaded. And I don't have the data to determine what the practical impact would be.
Right. I mean, so I'd imagine like when the new Seton store went up, that would be considered new construction. That was what in the last? I don't know. The new five, five, six years, I would imagine. Can you?
Yeah, that's probably ten year.
But our connection fees have not changed during that time. So they would have paid the same. I mean, it would be a similar circumstance that there's not a whole bunch of people living there.
And it also depends on how far back you go.
Right.
You can't go back to the beginning of time.
Right.
Well, I guess you could, but it would be financially devastating.
Right. Oh, yeah.
We would have started when when the ordinance passed, we couldn't go back.
Right, exactly. No, no. And I wasn't suggesting that. I was just thinking that if you know, we have had construction go up. And that is my reservation in the sense that our fees haven't changed since COVID. You know, I mean, since the inception of the building, this has been, this number has stayed the same. I'm I'm sure there are a lot of other construction costs that have gone up, but this has always been a known number.
I don't know what year it was, but I think before the eighty two hundred, it may have been set at set at around 4,000. So at at some point in the, you know, recent decade, you know, new construction did pay less than tap fees. You know, when I believe it was when Pembroke and Brookfield came online, you know, that administration actually reduced tap fees to get those developments in. So there's a lot of pros and cons with, you know, moving forward with a different rate. Some are going to be, you know, worse overall and some are going to be better overall.
Did they reduce impact fees or tap?
I believe it was tap fees.
I'd have to go back. They I I have to go back to that chart that I did for the one meeting. I don't believe they reduced tap fees, but they got rid of their surcharges. So their tap fees have gone up cons or they haven't gone up in a long time, but they got rid of that surcharge that they used to have. And I think they combined it all into one.
Right.
Now, impact fees, you're correct. They they were they were reduced.
Yeah.
Setonville or Seton Center was 2017.
Okay.
And they paid a total of 145,800 in tap fees. They had nine each, nine water, nine sewer.
Okay.
It was the same rate that is current day.
Because looking at some of the that's something that also is a is another variable in this is that looking at if there is a fixture rate, then there tend to be other surcharges on top of it that we don't currently have. There. So that's just something to keep in mind, too. Further discussion.
I think we need the resolution made. I think we need the resolution, the resolution made a new one.
So.
For the all, you bring all nonprofits and organizations and on this one, the new one.
So if we provide direction to have to prepare a resolution, that doesn't, that just means it's for a discussion, it's not necessarily.
Right. And and then you will take a vote on the resolution at your next meeting.
Okay.
Can you get it on the agenda?
Okay. Next November is pretty.
Yeah, you're talking two weeks.
Yeah, no.
No, I was.
I'll do my best, but um. Well, I mean, as part, okay, so here's here's where I'm at. If we do move forward with a resolution to consider for nonprofits or however it is that we want to categorize them. I would like to see, I don't know, Ms. Powell, if it would even make sense to add in certain things like timeline or deadline. So let's say that this like projects that get, you know, never come to fruition, don't break ground for years and years and years and years.
They should expire.
Right.
Yeah, I think that's already in the code.
Right. You have one year.
One year.
One year.
Yeah.
So okay, one year. And then what happens after the year? They have to come back and reapply? I, yes, okay. And then same thing if if the site plan changes and it's smaller, same thing, right? Have to reapply. That's a given.
Yeah, it would have to go back to planning commission.
Okay. And I believe the change of rates is a is a whole separate matter at this point.
Rates themselves for the service is a completely separate matter.
Right, like I correct. Okay. Have we talked about, can we have a a workshop in in November to talk about the rates, the tap fee connection? Fee so we can move forward on on.
So you also need to do your workshop related to the student housing as you do have an applicant who submitted a text amendment which you told him and his attorney it would go to a workshop.
Yeah.
So I was going to recommend you do that in November.
Yep.
I did ask Ms. Powell if there's advocacy advertising requirements and public hearing requirements for this payment plan, because that also then helps determine a timeline.
Yeah. And I mean, why and while you're doing it by resolution, the safer course of action is to have a hearing, but I can double check and do the research because typically we do these things by ordinance. And so this is sort of a sideways approach and I wasn't prepared to answer that and I apologize.
Oh, no, no. But typically, a resolution wouldn't require a public hearing.
Well, no, that's the piece that I need to look at because typically what you do when you're adopting laws that apply across the board is to do it by resolution. But this particular ordinance authorizes you to do things by resolution. And so it's kind of a mix. And so, you know, certainly if it's an ordinance, you absolutely have to have a have a, you know, public hearing and advertised with advanced notice. And I don't think at this point, the public, because it's considered a discussion item only, you're not in a place where you could even do that because it was advertised as a discussion.
Oh, understood. Okay.
So in November, could we have a workshop to discuss tap fees as well as student housing?
Those are two big ones in one night. Can can we hold on that thought until we figure out where this is going to fall as far as um.
I think the immediate question is whether you want to direct staff to prepare a resolution for nonprofits to be eligible for a payment plan. Other payment plans are five years. And that's typically Frederick County used to offer them. They don't anymore because things went haywire. Things did not end well.
Yeah.
Because people would start and then, you know, projects would fall apart and.
And that was a question I did have. If if a project does fall apart in the middle of a payment plan, what does that look like?
It's a problem.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so what can happen is it will get either paid out of any sales proceeds if the project is sold. If a new purchaser buys it, then it depends on whatever that new purchaser is going to want to use the property for, but typically it'll be in the same category of use. And so then they would have to make good on the defaulted note, the defaulted agreement if it was not deducted from sales proceeds.
Okay.
But we could put those type of protections in the language of a payment plan?
Oh, yeah. I mean, it's a contract.
Yeah.
So so this is a it's a two step process. You have to approve the resolution, but then you also have to approve. You'd have to approve his application for it as well. So it's it's a two step process.
Right.
But there is provisions in in the resolution that do say that what happens if it's not paid and and things of that nature.
Okay. And so.
We could use that as a model.
Okay.
Your existing resolution as a model.
Do you want me to make a motion?
No, not yet.
No.
Sorry. Yes, you're allowed to do whatever you want.
Discussion only, so there's.
That's right. No motion.
So you don't need a motion to direct staff to prepare a resolution?
I think a hint as to what you want would be very helpful.
Would you please prepare a resolution for a five year payment plan for Christ Community Church?
I think there's interest in looking at what one would look like.
You would you want it to be not? I think it'd have to. Would you want it to be not, I think it'd have to be nonprofits across the board, or at a minimum churches, religious institutions across the board would be the smallest piece.
Right.
But the larger slice of that would be to allow it for all nonprofits.
Is there any reason why we would want to go with one versus the other?
I, I mean, I think that in terms of the services that your nonprofits provide, they're probably all deserving.
Okay.
So, but that's my personal opinion, you know, it's a decision for the board, but.
Okay.
I think if we make it for all of them, then we won't have to readjust the resolution again.
Yeah, that's a good point. Okay. And then we can, we can, does it say in our current one that it does expire? I don't see that, or is that part of the ordinance and not the resolution?
It's actually part of the ordinance. When you apply for tap fees, you have one year.
Gotcha. All right, thank you.
So your current, your current payment plan allows, or states that they require twenty, or does require twenty-five percent down, paid upon this middle of the request. And then it also allows a waiver up to ten percent of the total fee credited in the first two years.
Yeah, I saw that for this other applicant.
That one sounds weird. It didn't make sense to me. It wasn't clear what that meant.
No, and it makes me wonder, do we revisit this one, too?
You may want to, because that's one piece that was sort of like, hmm.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
Because there's no guidance for what constitutes a qualified applicant.
Right.
I mean, unless you're gonna clarify what constitutes a qualified applicant, that's just gonna become a sticky wicket.
Well, I mean, in this particular, on twenty dash oh four R, it tells you what a qualified applicant is.
Right, but so then, but the way this is written, it says may allow for a waiver of up to ten percent of the total water and sewer connection fee credited in the first two years for qualified applicants. So I have to confess, I'm not entirely clear on what that means.
I'm not entirely happy that it's there either, like, I don't know.
This could certainly in the first two years. What I, what I believe it means is that ten percent of the first two-year payments can be waived. But the remaining three years would be full freight. So it would wind up being eighty percent of the total tap fee. I, I think that if you, if you.
Yeah, I don't know why we would do that for commercial.
Yeah, I'm not, I know that this was requested, I mean, previously.
Yeah.
To be included, but if you want to revisit it, we can delete it.
I think this was done for the the potential new comfort in and, and.
Oh.
The stuff.
Right, that didn't have.
Come in and requested.
But that, that expired then, right? Because it didn't happen within a year.
He never, he never actually made any application, so we never moved forward with his.
Okay.
So we can, yeah, I would revisit this one, too.
Yeah, I would like to, because then, like, number seven, I read number seven on this several times before coming here, and I still have no idea what it means. The collateral for the capacity purchased under the payment plan shall be the real property which the capacity serves, therefore the payment plan shall be between the town of Emmitsburg and the property owner.
This goes to what I was talking about, if someone defaults and you can take it out of the property.
Okay.
Because that's the security. So, so like a mortgage, for example, on a home, the home serves as the security for the mortgage, and if you default on the mortgage, the mortgage company can then take the house under the foreclosure proceeding.
Okay, that makes more sense. Thank you. I'm glad I asked. Okay, so it sounds like we would like to see some kind of mock-up on a payment plan for nonprofit and potentially revisiting twenty dash oh four R at the same time. Yes.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Twenty dash oh four R would remain in effect unchanged, because it was a, it was a previous resolution, we can revisit the actual ordinance. Chapter thirteen dot, dot oh four.
Yeah, that one, that won't need to be amended, because it just refers to the payment plan. So you could amend resolution twenty dash oh four R and then create a new resolution for the nonprofits.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Twenty dash oh four R is.
It's.
It's the, it's the resolution, correct?
Correct.
That's the ordinance has a different number, correct? So we can't, we're not gonna amend twenty dash oh four R, it's a resolution that's gonna stay in place.
No, no. What, what's being requested is that the resolution, Exhibit A, the resolution itself, not the ordinance which authorizes the resolution. Ordinance stays the same, but the resolution that would, is, was adopted would be amended and restated to delete paragraph four.
So two different, two different things going on. So.
Right, but I thought you said if we did a new resolution, it would be in addition.
It would still be, okay, so before, that was before we were focusing on number four as the, as the fee waiver. So what we're talking about now is doing.
Replacing both, well.
Yes, ma'am, that's exactly right.
Okay.
Yeah, basically, the conversation morphed into addressing item number four.
And the ordinance doesn't currently address the, the ten percent waiver?
No, the ordinance only addresses, basically states, sewer and water connection fee payment plan is established for non-residential properties, the terms and conditions of which will be determined, be determined from time to time by the mayor and board of commissioners and enacted by resolution. So that doesn't change, this ordinance does not change at all, because it, it references the resolutions. And that's why it was written that way, so you could make changes to this payment plan without having to do a full-blown ordinance change.
Like we do in policies and stuff.
Correct, yes.
Got it. Does that make sense? Are we comfortable with that, commissioners?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, is that direction? Okay, I don't see this happening by November, though.
So you will come back with a timeline for that?
No, because, I mean, the agenda packets with everything going smoothly, we'll go out next Tuesday, so a week from now.
No. I, I wouldn't say in a week, I was figuring December.
Okay. Yeah.
That was what I was thinking, too, because I brought our agenda for.
Yes.
Coming up in November, it's already pretty packed. And then we have to fit in a workshop as well. And we can talk about that. How much we want to pack into a workshop.
The, the permit has already been issued, correct? For Christ Community Church?
No.
The permit, I thought of like a temporary permit or something was.
No, they're still finalizing their improvement, your, their improvement plans. If I recall correctly, and the G O is not here, so Pastor John, if you correct me, I think, were they conditionally approved, or they're still waiting to go to the planning commission?
I think Frederick County probably has to weigh in on sediment erosion and control and stormwater management, doesn't it?
They were conditionally approved.
Okay.
But everything's at the county level now.
Okay, so once that's all wrapped up and done, then once the conditions have all been met, then he can apply for the permit along with this payment plan.
Thank you. Okay.
Can I make a couple of comments?
Uh, I don't know.
Just to clarify.
Oh, it is discuss, okay, yes.
Um, there's, there's been a, past two meetings, maybe more, three meetings have been talk about well, the, the, the use of the building changing. And I'm projecting uses based upon what we're doing now is eight to ten hours a week. Considering a service being an hour, and then you got an hour before, an hour after, people setting up and tearing down, cleaning up and all that. Different activities we have during the week, which are, you know, hour or two. All those compiled together. So if all of the Embersburg turns to Jesus and starts worshiping Jesus, what does, like I said, it'd be a great thing. But, um, if we hadn't had another service, you're talking about another three hours. And so to compare a forty-hour business, which would be forty-plus, to ten, sixteen hours is really, not really comparable. And then when you, when you look at, um, say, um, um, Seton Center, you know, they're, they're open all week long. They have people in and out there all day long. And so that's not really comparable either. And if you look at rudders, they're, they're, you know, they're both, we're sandwiched in between their price. Rudders live and all the time and, and busy, and so there's really nothing to compare that, that far with our usage. It's not gonna change that much. One of the, one of the comments is, I keep hearing people all about the, the church giving up, folding up, whatever else, but, um.
That's only a, yeah.
That's only a hypothetical.
Yeah, that's not.
I just want to encourage you guys, it's not my thing, it's not my name. It is, is our church is, um, a somebody of God, it's under the Potomac Ministry Network. All of our property is theirs, if we were to dissolve, which is quite a process, but if, if that were to happen, the Potomac Ministry Network would actually take over the church and put another pastor in that place.
Understood.
Um, so it's not a.
Well, and I think also Pastor John, that what we're talking about here is trying to provide you with some immediate ability to proceed, should you wish to do so, and the town has expressed an interest in revisiting the connection fees, the tap fees, and adjusting those, but that's not something that can be done in any, you know, short timeframe. And, and that's, and I think that what the town's trying to do is to accommodate, to accommodate the church, so that it can move forward as it chooses.
Yes, I do appreciate that.
Yes, thank you. And it's, a lot of the discussion that you hear is, is hypothetical, because we want to make sure as a town that, you know, we look at all different scenarios.
Sure.
Not only for your best interest, but for the town's best interest, so it's, it's not in any way a wish or a hope that you fold or in any way we want you here.
Sure.
It's just, you know, what happens if, what happens if, because we've had other applicants and other resolutions come through, and we haven't seen it through to fruition yet, so that's where that was coming from. But thank you for the clarification.
Sure, I just wanted to, to comfort you or encourage you.
Yeah, we work out on you being there, like, we wouldn't be going through all this for nothing now.
Me either. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so I feel like that kind of wraps up our discussion for number three. Unless there's anything else, commissioners, I feel like we've already given direction, work out on that. Okay, so then, having said that, it brings us to the agenda for November, and then we can talk about the workshop as well.
I do have some additions from the last meeting.
Sure.
For administrative business, this is the November fourth meeting, yes. For consideration, free holiday metered parking with all proceeds being donated to the Emmitsburg Food Bank.
This is under admin?
Yes, and then, uh, number two is an update on the lead line service inventory project.
Okay.
Consent agenda for consideration approval of proclamation of MML Municipal Government Works Month. Number two for consideration, accept the resignation of Wayne Slaughter and Sandy Slaughter from the Citizens Advisory Committee. Number three for consideration, appoint Wendy Hagan to the Parks and Recreation Committee with the term of November fourth, twenty twenty-four to November fourth, twenty twenty-six. And then agenda items, number one will be the Community Development Block Grant Public Hearing to provide information on the progress of the DePaul Street Waterline Replacement Project. Number two for consideration approval, reject the request from Mr. Robert A. Fritz Jr. to acquire a right-of-way through the town's property on Hampton Valley Road. Number three for consideration approval of bid for the town of Emmitsburg Sewer Line Camera Project. Number four, presentation on the Town of Emmitsburg Comprehensive Plan. And number five, discussion related to F Y twenty-five water rates.
That's a big agenda, yeah.
I can delay the update on the lead line service project inventory, or the lead line service inventory project, and delay that till November, if you prefer.
Do you mean December?
December, yes.
Yes, let's do that, let's make that one to December. Guess there's no point in delaying free holiday parking.
Right, yeah, because that'll be here after.
Yeah, that would be, okay. Yes, I'm sorry.
That one should only take.
Yeah, that'll be a quick one, yeah, completely.
The three consent, they have to go.
Yeah.
November.
The comp plan. So we'll have a detailed presentation on that, correct?
If the board wishes, yes. You can delay that as well. I don't, we're trying to get it wrapped up. I would rather not delay it. I, the, so number two is just, the staff's looking for guidance on number two. Basically, it's a request of a resident on Hampton Valley Road to get a right-of-way on, through our property. And we were just looking for direction if the town would, if this board of commissioners would even entertain it. That one, I, I could delay that till December.
I would, I would like to, is there, is that one in any way, shape or form time-sensitive to something that is tied to a project? Okay, no, that's.
Not for all.
Not for.
Yeah, I'd move it to December.
I would like to move that one to December, if everyone's okay.
Because I think the comprehensive plan is gonna be a big chunk.
That's what I'm thinking, and the water rates is gonna be a big chunk. Sewer line camera project, that is time-sensitive because of the bid.
Right, the bids are due this Friday. So, um, when we, and that was something that we discussed during RFPs, we wanted to respond to them in a timely manner.
Yeah, 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 absolutely, okay. All right, so we did move some stuff.
And the, and the public hearing, that's, that is a time-sensitive requirement.
Yes. Okay, all right. I think those other additions will be fine. So then the workshop, we did say we wanted to come back and talk about that in more detail. It's just a matter of finding when people are available.
Are you bringing both ordinances back or just the student housing? For the workshop?
Let's see other.
You had the student housing, and then you had the rental registration ordinance.
Oh, the rental registration.
Yeah.
I would like to have both of those at the workshop.
Okay.
That's for Thursday in December.
Uh, the third Tuesday in December is the Parks Committee meeting.
You mean November?
No, yeah, November.
What about the twentieth?
What about? I would, I would prefer not, I have a personal engagement on the twentieth. What about Tuesday, the twelfth?
Tuesday, the twelfth? I mean, is that enough time to get all the?
Well, both of those ordinances are already done.
Yeah.
And then, yeah, I mean, that one.
And you said that.
Staff wouldn't have a lot to get done for that one.
Does the thirteenth work for you as well? Tuesdays tend to be not preferable for me anyway.
The thirteenth, we have the nonprofit meeting, and we've already sent those letters out.
That's right.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
I'm glad you mentioned that, yeah. Do I hear a fourteenth? Fourteenth? No? I mean, then we're getting into the week before things. I mean, then we're getting into the week before Thanksgiving.
What is the Monday?
Um, the Monday would be.
Third Monday?
The third Monday is the eighteenth.
And you do the eighteenth?
I thought you're not available.
I will be for that.
Nice of you, Commissioner Sweeney.
No, my meeting was canceled on the eighteenth.
Oh, okay. Okay. November eighteenth, then, okay, geez, Commissioner Sweeney, information that would have been helpful ten minutes ago.
I didn't think about it till just now.
It's all, it's all good.
I just found out that yesterday, so had to register.
It's all good. No, alright, it does, alright, that works. November eighteenth, so we're bringing back the two resolutions on student housing. And Commissioner Turnquist, you were mentioning whether or not we wanted to bring up the fixture rate at the same time?
I don't know that we need a workshop yet. I think what we really need is to give staff direction. Mrs. Willetts has already talked about two different proposals, one with a fixture count, one with. Facing it on the usage, and she's offered to contact other municipalities and gain information. So, sitting through a workshop without any of that information is kind of useless, in my opinion. So if we could give direction to staff to look into that, and then we can set up a workshop when we have that information.
Yeah, we might have to workshop in December.
Well, okay, so in December, our auditors have requested a second meeting in December to present the audit. The F Y twenty-four audit.
Usually we do that, we don't usually have a second one in December, correct?
I know.
Why do they want to, why do they want their own?
Because, well, if we keep December's agenda short, I could get them at the first meeting in December. They just asked for a later meeting in December.
Oh, because they need more time?
I will say, no, we actually completed everything, uh, very quickly this year. Our new accountant has exceeded all expectations. When it comes to the audit, so we were ready to move forward.
Okay.
Um, I can talk to them and just see if they can do the first meeting in December.
Yeah, tell them we're busy people, and we have all their workshops. No, I'm kidding. Um, if that's, if that's possible, that would be great. Um, and maybe we can hold off on. Scheduling that workshop until we know for sure that they can make that date.
Okay.
But if they can make that date, then. I would like to, to squeeze in a workshop. With that direction, because I don't know that you would, if, if we were to try to tack that on to November eighteenth, that they'd have enough time to gather that information. Yeah, me too. So, or do we tentatively want to put the workshop on, on the books right now, just so we don't have to come back?
So this would be, in December, would only be for connection fees? Can probably get that done.
Um, or maybe we should wait, let's wait until November to schedule the December workshop, because then, um, Commissioner Hoover. Should be back, and we can pick a date that works for everybody. Um, Commissioner Turnquist, will you be? Good for the November meeting?
November fourth, as of right now, I'm scheduled for surgery.
Okay. So.
We usually don't have a town meeting. We have a town meeting the first, I think we moved it to the second Monday because of, or was it a Tuesday because of the?
Tree lighting?
For tree lighting and all that stuff.
Correct.
So then we're meeting on December ninth?
There was, there was the next week, I can't remember.
Should be December third.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay. December third. So we could do a workshop the following week? Potentially. I don't know. Like the ninth or the tenth?
I, I don't see why not.
Right. Maybe.
My preference would be the Monday, but it's whatever anybody's available.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Turnquist, not that we're, I don't think we need to pick the, the date tonight, but I just wanted to make sure if you're not here in November, the. Either the ninth or the tenth would work.
For December?
Yes.
I'll be here for the workshop in November.
Oh, yeah.
It's just the November fourth meeting.
Right, I just, okay.
Workshop, I'm good, and if you want to do a workshop in November, I mean, December ninth, that's good as well.
Okay.
But we can wait until November.
Okay, so that's tentatively what we're looking at then is, I would say the, the ninth. And we'll confirm that at a later date. Okay. So November eighteenth, student housing, both of those, and then in December, it would be the connection piece.
Okay.
Yeah. Um. Ms. Willetts, will, uh, for the com plan, will that printed-up booklet be ready?
I'll have to ask Nogelia what, what she'll have ready. I know she has a PowerPoint ready. I'll have.
Okay.
My recollection is that she was doing a compare version, so that you could see the changes.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes, and I had just asked if we could get a copy of the PDF that was attached, since it was rather lengthy.
Right, yeah, you had requested that it be printed out and made available to you, because otherwise you'd be printing a gazillion pages.
Right. Is, is that possible?
Yeah, I'll get with her. She's, she's in a conference this week.
Okay.
I'll get with her.
Okay, alright, perfect. Thank you.
Since the workshop could be lengthy, is there any thought about starting at six thirty?
Um, the only concern I have with that is getting the notice out to the public in time, since we're. Oh, the workshop?
Yeah, yeah, we have a month.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I thought you meant like the regular town meeting. Oh, no, what do you think? Six thirty? Yeah, are we allowed to, we're allowed to do that? We'll just.
Yeah, we'll, um, get the word out, start in tomorrow, and we'll make sure we just blast it everywhere.
Put it up on the, on the website, and, yeah, it doesn't require a newspaper ad or anything.
Okay, Mayor Davis, will you provide dinner for us too? No, I'm kidding. We'll just make it a working session with meals. Yeah. Alright, that works. I think that's. That's a great idea for workshops, is to start those earlier. Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Alright, is that all? Okay, do we, we don't, do we need to vote on the updated agenda? But no, this was just a workshop, so.
You could just do a, a consent on the updated agenda, and that would be fine.
I'm okay with it.
Oh, how are we with it? Do you consent? Okay, we're good, we're good with that. Alright. Alright. If there's nothing else, then I believe we are good to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn the town meeting.
I second it.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye, motion carries, four in favor and one absent. Meeting is adjourned at eight eighteen P M.